So today we'll hear, starting with Alejo Stark, who is a physicist, philosopher, and political militant, who works and studies in the Rust Belt. For more than a decade, he's been active in abolitionist struggles as an undocumented organizer, interrupting deportations, supporting prisoner resistance in the wake of the prison strikes, and as a graduate student worker with the Graduate Employees Organization, G E O., which is at the University of Michigan Ann Arbor. Then we'll hear from Sophie Karasik, who's a progressive organizer and former director of education and co-founder of the National Group End Rape on Campus, where she helped spearhead the movement against campus sexual violence that made headlines from 2013 to 2017, and helped prime the public for Me Too. Then we'll hear from both Britt Schrader and Joel Sabando, who are both juniors at Harvard College, and they're both organizers with the Harvard Prison Divestment Campaign. And then finally, we'll hear from Chloe Trong-Jones, who's a PhD candidate in American Studies at NYU and a graduate fellow at CUNY Law School. She's part of the COPS Off-Campus National Coalition and facilitates the labor working group. So each speaker is gonna have some time to intro themselves and their work for about 10 minutes or so. If you guys go a little bit over, that's totally fine also. And then we'll open it up for some Q and A. So please drop your questions into the chat. Whenever they come up, we'll collect them for later. So Alejo, I'll pass it on to you first.
Great, thanks, Christina. Can everybody hear me? Yeah, thanks, Christina, for the intro and for the meditation as well. I gotta say, I'm really interested in learning more about public health, but I'll maybe share some ways in which it's been helpful in some of the organizing we've been doing here at the University of Michigan, particularly with the Union, the Grad Student Union, G E O. And I gotta say, also, I've been at U of M for a long while. Haven't been able to kick me out just yet. So maybe a few more years, I'll be here. So maybe I'll just start by saying that, you know, one of the main sort of events in my personal history recently here at the University of Michigan is the 2020 strike. Do people know about the 2020 strike in the fall of 2020 by grad students at the University of Michigan? I can't see people's faces.
I don't tell us.
No, okay, good. So, you know, one of the things that, I think was really important about the strike is that, first of all, it was the first strike that we went on for really most of our history since 1975. And more importantly, the strike, I think, articulated two really important demands. As you can imagine, this is the fall of 2020, right after the George Floyd rebellion and uprising, and of course, the mass sort of death that came in the wake of the COVID pandemic. And so the strike got started by articulating two demands. We asked for safe and just campus. So we were able to articulate, on the one hand, COVID-related demands, you know, around robust testing, having a universal option for teaching, extension to our graduation timelines, subsidies for caretakers and so on, as well as a repeal of international student fees. And we were able to articulate those with policing demands, nominally abolitionist demands to defund campus police, the militarized campus police, cutting ties with ICE, right? So our call to make a safe and just campus, try to bring together, in many ways, things that are sometimes seen as separate, right? Like, because we have this naturalized way in which we think about policing as being about safety, right? Even here at the University of Michigan, the police department is euphemistically called the Division of Public Safety and Security, right? So we conflate security with safety and safety with security, right? But as a longtime abolitionist, Stevie Wilson says, he, you know, is incarcerated in Pennsylvania, and, you know, one of the claims he makes is, "Look, I am surrounded by cameras and prison walls and cages. That's very secure, but I'm not in any way safe," right? So I think the strike was really important for, at least at some level, making really visible the idea that safety is not equal to security. There's a long history in this small liberal Ann Arbor town of racist policing, as you can imagine, no matter what the mayor tells you and what local politicians tell you. And, you know, one of the main things we were able to bring to light at the time was also the fact that John Sido, the chief of police when R.A. Rossiter was murdered in 2014, a black artist and woman, a mother of three, who was literally murdered within seconds of police, Ann Arbor police entering her home in 2014. The police chief at the time immediately left and then was hired by the university, right? So there's a long sort of history and continuity between the violence of policing and the university, and that's just one aspect of it, right? So we went on a strike for longer than a week. It was the longest strike in our history. It was the longest strike since we got started as a union in 1975. And as is perhaps expected, they used the criminal injustice system against us and threatened to file an injunction to basically sue our union out of existence after the second week of being on strike. Unfortunately, that ended the strike. And what we were able to get out of the policing, at least, aspect of it, or the abolitionist aspect of it, was merely a task force. And we know what task forces do. They do very little. But from going from nothing, right? The university would not sit and talk with us about policing. We got a task force out of it, which, again, did nothing. But two years down the line, fast forwarding to today, we now have some language through which we can leverage and continue to fight for abolition in campus and in the broader community. Because in their strike agreement document, the document the university typed up and gave the union the sign, said that while policing is not a subject of bargaining, that is, well, policing is not something that you can bargain over, because, you know, police are workers, as they say, and we can't bargain for other workers. It turns out that nonetheless, they said policing is a public health hazard, public health concern, right? That's what the university said in the next line, right? So if it's a public health concern, then it therefore means that the safety and health over union members, other grad student workers, is part of what we can bargain over, right? And therefore, we can bargain for policing. So that's a strategy we're trying out this time around, and we'll let you know how that goes, because we're about to vote on our bargaining platform today, and we're gonna start bargaining next week, actually. We have a big rally coming up next week. And what we're asking for this time around is specifically for the university to fund a non-police unarmed response, which, again, will be something that is, as far as I can tell, very unprecedented in terms of what unions can bargain for. And we're very lucky to have a team of abolitionist comrades here in Ann Arbor and Washington County, more generally, in southeast Michigan, that started this coalition a few years ago called the Coalition for Re-Envisioning Our Safety, which is precisely developing a non-police unarmed response for all sorts of situations, including, you know, mental health as well as other situations of harm in view of having police respond, right? So this would be a separate institution from the police. And we want the university to fund that. We want the university to throw its multi-billion, you know, someone's multi-billion dollar endowment into funding this, right? So that's what we're fighting for. We didn't get much last time around, but it gave us a little window, precisely by sort of framing this as a public health issue that we're gonna try to fight for this upcoming year. So that's kind of where we're at. And I'll be happy to talk more about sort of organizing in general, but also organizing in terms of unions as well.
That's awesome. Thanks, Alejo. And yeah, it's super interesting to hear that they framed it as a public health issue. And I do hope that that's helpful in the bargaining. Sophie, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Hi, thanks so much. Really cool to hear about the work that you're doing, Alejo. And yeah, looking forward to hearing from other folks as well. My name is Sophie Karasik. I use she/her pronouns. And right now, I'm in Brooklyn, New York, but have been living in Denmark for most of the pandemic. I have a background as a progressive organizer, mostly in the sexual violence survivor justice spaces and also in climate justice advocacy. I have been in this space for almost 15 years. And yeah, I'm really looking forward to talking more about kind of like the evolution that I think is happening now in the sexual violence survivor justice space in particular, or at least conversations that have started to percolate in the last few years about abolition or non-carceral and non-punitive approaches. And yeah, I think if I just bring it back to my own, my own experience or my own kind of personal evolution around this, basically, I started organizing in 2013 around sexual assault on college campuses being a national issue and like connecting with other survivors around the country to try and show that this was a widespread problem, that sexual violence was happening on college campuses and it wasn't isolated to any particular part of the country or type of school. And we had like a pretty clear goal of trying to create a consensus in popular opinion that that was an issue. But we didn't really engage very much with what the solutions to that problem should be or what the causes of it were. And kind of, I think, let the kind of white feminist ecosystem or approach of like, in order for this to, in order for us to have rape taken seriously, we must engage with punitive approaches. That's what it means to take rape seriously. I think that definitely influenced our movement and definitely influenced me personally. So I think, yeah, my evolution in terms of kind of coming around from realizing that, oh, actually, having a punitive response to sexual harm is not survivor-centered or solely, you know, I think maybe somebody is unmuted. But anyway, so basically, I think, yeah, a lot of my like approach shifting around that was when I read this study called "Justice From the Victim's Perspective" by Dr. Judith L. Herman. He's a psychiatrist who wrote this book called Trauma and Recovery and some other stuff folks might be familiar with. And basically, she interviewed survivors about what justice actually would look like from their perspective and found that a lot of the time, it was validation from the community or like a transfer of the shame that survivors often feel after experiencing sexual harm. And yeah, that just kind of acknowledgement that harm happened and like, I'm a person. I'm worthy. I didn't deserve this to happen to me. And like, yeah, just the level of empathy that the punitive system often directly incentivizes us against. So first, I think it was just kind of like this new lens or this new perspective of like, hey, I feel as though in the survivor justice movement for the last or for like a three to five-year period had really been saying that we were survivor-centered. But that was really sent, that was really like, ultimately fitting in this kind of box of like expulsions and suspensions, but not really taking a step outside of that and being like, well, from like a values perspective or a, you know, just like human to human, what is it that you really feel like you need? It's like, that wasn't the fundamental question that we were asking. So I feel like in terms of my own evolution, it really started there. And then I wrote an op-ed about it that got a lot of resonance from people. And I was like, okay, seems like there's something here. And I think especially during the uprisings in 2020 around the murder of George Floyd, that it became even clearer that like, oh, okay, this narrative of like policing in prisons being equated to public safety in cases of sexual harm and sexual violence is actually, yeah, it's, we actually can't continue to be a justification for this as survivors of violence. So yeah, I think that like, that's kind of the evolution that I had personally around it was like just being grounded in the experiences that I was seeing of other survivors and of myself, honestly. I think I had to reflect honestly on what it was that I would have really wanted from the sexual violence, out of the like, response from the university when I had experienced sexual harm. You know, it's just like, oh, okay, what I actually really wanted was for this person to never do this again, ever. That was like the main thing that I remember saying. And yeah, just that that was not, that was not what the like intervention system provided by the university was designed to do. So yeah, that's kind of like my background in terms of that. But I think in terms of like movement building more generally, if I like, if I could go, if I could go back to campus, it's been like seven years since I was on campus. So it's been quite a long time. And I think it would have been really helpful for me to have understood that like, our ultimate goal was to shift the way that the public was thinking about sexual violence, to like have the public actually be like in consensus that there was a problem and to try and think more strategically about, okay, what is it that we would have wanted to have happen once there was consensus? So that's one thing. But all things considered, I mean, we were like in our early twenties and just winging it a lot of the time. I think that we did do pretty well. I think other advice that I would give to people is just like centering storytelling and like people's lived experiences. But I feel like this is stuff that hopefully a lot of people know. But anyways, yeah, I think that I evolved a lot on this topic in the last five years. And I, yeah, I can feel it even now. It's like difficult for me to fully express like how I feel about it. But I'm, yeah, grateful to be here and to like speak in first draft about this to some degree. And yeah, to engage with people who are like-minded on this.
Thanks, Sophie. Super appreciate it. Yeah, and look forward to continuing to engage with you. I just appreciate the like idea that to be survivor-centered is not actually to be involving the criminal legal system often. I feel like that's, that is a point that is often missing. So thank you for that. And cool, I'm gonna pass it off to Joel and Britt.
Hello, I'm Britt, and I'm an organizer with H P D C, or the Harvard Prison Divestment Campaign. And I also wanted to say, as a quick comment to Sophie, I think all of us are kind of just in our young twenties winging it, or I am, at least, when you're in the organizing space. And I'll let Joel introduce himself real quick, and then we can talk a little bit about H P D C's work.
Yeah, hi, I'm Joel. I'm also a junior at Harvard. I'm really happy to be here, and I'm happy to be in communion with you all. And I wanted to say to both Sophie and Alejo that you guys are doing such great work. And I feel like it can be so difficult and kind of demoralizing sometimes, and also really scary, especially when you're young and you're students and you're fighting against what feels like a really difficult and like entrenched system. But I think we're all there. And I mean, I'm glad we're all here, so.
Yeah, echoing that, this work is beautiful, and I'm really glad to be here. So just talking a little bit about H P D C. So the Harvard Prison Divestment Campaign, which I've been organizing with for about two years now, is an abolitionist divestment campaign focused on, specifically Harvard's investments in the prison industrial complex. It emerged in 2018 kind of on accident, which I think goes with the line of you organizing is very much, as things come up, sometimes you realize there's a problem, and then you start engaging with it. A couple of students were doing research on Harvard's investments and uncovered their investments in the prison industrial complex. And we're essentially like, this is wrong, right? With Harvard having the investment or the endowment of like $50-plus billion. And eventually, it started off as an awareness campaign and eventually evolved into a directly abolitionist organization fighting for Harvard's divestments and also serving other abolitionist organizations in the Boston community. So essentially, kind of what the Harvard Prison Divestment Campaign, our strategy is constantly evolving. I think that's something about organizing on campus is that there's, every couple of years, people shift and people bring new ideas and new ways to bring attention to this. So, for example, we had folks at the law school who helped file a lawsuit against Harvard for their investments in the prison industrial complex. We also have done direct actions where during like major events, we protest in some form. We do service with other community organizations in the Boston community. And I think that's something that is really important about kind of H P D C as a, as a college-centered abolitionist organization is that also this kind of dual recognition that the kind of, I think, what we are grounded in today, like the prison industrial complex, is currently incarcerating people, millions of people. And so grounding that work also outside of the university and people that are directly impacted, whether that be like letter-writing campaigns or pen pal campaigns through, I don't know if y'all know Black and Pink, but it's a queer abolitionist organization. And so a lot of what we do is really trying to focus, it's kind of, I would say, like there are three tiers. One is like community education and campus education. So getting people talking about and talking about the prison industrial complex more broadly, but also specifically talking about Harvard's culpability in the prison industrial complex. The other side is, once we have people talking and within our work, how can we make it to where the administrators, kind of like Joel was mentioning, where the administrators care and hear our voices? How can we bother them and be a persistent, like, basically bother them into paying attention to us? And then the third side, which I mentioned, was directly serving other organizations in the community. And so that is a large focus of the H P D C. And I'll turn to Joel, who I think can talk a little bit more about us now and what we've been working on lately.
Yeah, just give me one second. I think my cat got stuck in my dresser. But yeah, so right now, what we're kind of doing is focusing on exposing some of Harvard's shady, let's say, obscuring of where they have their money held. So there's a lot here. I'll try and give a brief rundown of it. But basically, universities have typically put most of their money into private holdings, although they often also have some public holdings. And because they're nonprofits that are required to file these kind of special taxes that detail loosely where they have their money invested. And so a big focus this semester has been going through Harvard's tax filings to focus, to figure out where their private holdings are. In the past, we had done a lot of work on Harvard's public holdings, but earlier this year, they sold them all off. And so we completely lost access into like any information about where they had their money held. But when we did know what they had, we, I think, estimated they had almost $10 million directly invested in the prison industrial complex. And that was only in what I think was, at the time, 3% of their total holdings, which I think as of 2021, or I think $60 billion or something like that. So we've been working with a lot of other organizations on campus looking into these taxes, and we've uncovered a lot of what I feel like are pretty damning things. So things about tax structure, the, basically, a lot of ways that they're trying to obscure people like us looking into them. So they have six different subsidiary corporations that actually do all of the investing for them. Most of their investments are headquartered in the Cayman Islands. Some of them are tied exclusively to Harvard, but, you know, are kind of like hidden away. And some of them are also tied to, how do I put this? There are some journalists who seek to figure out where dirty money is. Quite a few of the organizations are headquartered in places that are tied to some of the websites and databases that journalists have identified as being used for money laundering or for drug trafficking and stuff like that. So pretty intense, pretty intensely damning things, I think, that we've been looking into. And we've been preparing a report, and we've been writing op-eds. And at Harvard, kind of the major event of the year is this big football game we have with Yale, which is coming up in a few weeks. And we're trying to, in the next few days, really organize a kind of like major launch of this research, of this expose, really, an op-ed, an action to coincide with Harvard Yale when a lot of people are coming onto campus, not only from Yale, but actually all across the country alumni. And yeah, so that's kind of what we've been doing most recently. And I guess something I think is relevant to note here is that for on-campus work, it often feels like it's kind of like the same 20 people in like a bunch of different orgs who are like spreading themselves kind of thin, doing this sort of stuff. But at the same time, I think it's so helpful to look beyond kind of like just the single abolitionist lens and look to organizations that are doing similar work and finding people who are allied with you, who can help you out when you have low capacity. I think part of the thing that comes about when one thinks about abolition is spreading abolitionist principles like to one's entire life, so giving oneself grace and also asking for help from others when you need it. And so I think Britt and I both have been really appreciative of people in Harvard's Palestine Solidarity Committee, people, which is obviously organizing in terms of Israel-Palestine conflict stuff. Harvard's Act for a Dream, which is kind of like DACA, anti-I stuff, and then Harvard's Stop Land Grabs, which is focusing on a lot of different things, but primarily Harvard's real estate investments. And I guess, yeah, so that's all I have to say there.
Awesome. Thank you both. Yeah, thanks for sharing all that. I think there are like many, many takeaway lessons from what you're saying, including like, this is an organization that's lasted from 2018, even with a lot of student turnover. So it's great to hear that. And definitely gonna be sending solidarity for that Harvard Yale game.
Um, cool. I will pass it on to Chloe now.
Hi, everyone. Um, thank you for inviting me and it's really great to be here and to hear from everyone. Um, I'm a grad student and a member of NYU G SOC and I'm also part of the National Cops Off Campus Coalition, which is probably relevant to everybody here. But it's a, it's a collective of students and educators and other university workers and organizations that are seeking to put forward alternatives to policing, to help build a future university beyond punishment and violence. Just for like a little bit of background, the group emerged out of the University of California cost of living wildcard strikes and has since sort of been reorganized a couple of times. Currently it's composed of different working groups. I facilitate the labor working groups. I don't have like a ton of info about the current activities in the other working groups. But primarily my working group is trying to link different graduate unions that are organizing to get cops off campus or get any other types of law enforcement off campus. So Alejo, I'm super happy to hear about Michigan's efforts and would love for you or anyone to come and share your experiences and knowledge and contract language, et cetera. If you're interested, if people have questions about the coalition itself, I'm happy to do my best to answer, but I'm mostly going to talk a little bit about NYU's 2020 strike and some of the lessons from this experience. And it really mirrors a light hose experience, especially in terms of the importance of framing policing as a health concern. But I'll do my best to sort of hopefully draw out other, other points. But similarly, we were bargaining a contract in fall of 2020. I was in the bargaining committee. We sort of felt similarly situated within the kind of political context of post George Floyd and the pandemic, which led to, you know, these kinds of abolition related demands feeling really urgent. And I'll make one kind of interesting distinction with NYU, which is that because it's an urban private university that has no formal contract with any police force and no sort of armed security. Organizing around this issue was a little bit hard because we would often say, or we would often hear, there are no cops on campus because there is no campus. So I think it really forces us to think about where the university begins and ends, so to speak. And as a couple of you have kind of pointed to, we had to think about NYU, you know, also as a major real estate owner that is complicit in policing and these other ways through gentrification, through controlling the way that capital is concentrated and the way that public circulates through the city and through its, its research institutions, et cetera. NYU is also a private university of global reach, which with campuses all over the world. For instance, in Israel, in places like United Arab Emirates. So you know, we were connecting it to struggles in Palestine. In addition, NYU has a board composed of individuals like Larry Fink, who is the president of BlackRock, who among many other things is one of the largest investors in private detention in the border. So this was also sort of informed by some of the things that were going on with family separation at the time. So these are just some of the, the things that we were thinking about to kind of politicize the involvement of NYU in issues of policing. But in addition, of course, policing was also affecting the daily lives of our workers. NYPD were all over campus, masks on, students were facing immigration concerns associated with COVID. We had one worker who was reincarcerated at Rikers Island during the bargaining because of a technical parole violation. So as some of you probably remember, this is the center of the center of the pandemic. So we had a lot of workers experiencing the threat of racial state violence through kind of these like health concerns as well. So I'm going to kind of note like two things about this experience that I think were important for me. One is about the difficulties of organizing around this subject, kind of like within unions. And the second has to do with some of the, the legal challenges we faced, which Alejo kind of pointed to as well. But starting with the legal challenges, as, as you noted, there are rules about what is considered a mandatory subject of bargaining, things like wages, healthcare, working conditions. But employers are not required to bargain over non-mandatory subjects of bargaining, which is basically what is mandatory and what is not mandatory is essentially guided by, by precedent. So this category of, of what is a, a worker's concern has grown over time. And I think part of the effort is to kind of grow that, that legal category to include policing as something that affects workers and include other things like racism and, and other aspects of sort of the police state. And as was mentioned, there can be consequences if you kind of push these issues and they're not being recognized as mandatory. It can be considered bad faith bargaining. So initially we did not get any response to NYU or any recognition. And at some point a strike became imminent and you know, we were pressured both within the union and especially from UAW, which is our parent union, to drop these demands. And as some people might know, UAW is a very large union that also represents police unions. So it's not necessarily in their interest to be centering these kinds of demands in a public graduate student strike. So we did, you know, this is, this is a solution that we kind of found later down the line. We were the cops off campus contract campaign and we ended up reframing it as a health and safety contract campaign. So that we could frame these issues within a health and safety framework. And, and to argue that it was a mandatory subject. So we collected testimonials around how police on campus affects mental health. We cited some of these instances in which police were on campus unmasked and not complying with COVID standards. We talked about the effect of surveillance on workers. NYU is a university that, you know, was, there was kind of an expose about the fact that NYPD was surveying Muslim student groups. So we talked a little bit about that effect, that sort of chilling effect on Muslim student groups. And we also made kind of overarching arguments about policing being contradictory to our safety as workers on a kind of broader, more fundamental scale. This is not like a precedented argument, as I said, in the sense that there is no like formal legal precedent. At one point, some of us were eager to actually get NYU to call an injunction on our strike in order for NLRB to make a determination. Cause we thought we had a favorable case to make policing a valid health concern because of the fact that there was this kind of COVID involvement. So that didn't happen, but if anyone is sort of just interested in discussing like kind of legal avenues that we were looking at, I think that there are like really exciting ways to be able to, to argue that in a place like the NLRB. And similarly to Michigan, we won a kind of task group. We were also successful in removing ICE from campus or getting at least provisions to remove ICE from campus. Because it's a federal organization, they can obviously force their way on campus with warrants and things like that. But that was definitely a big win, also to just gain this recognition of these issues. And I think a lot of our success ultimately came from less from like the bargaining sessions and more from the groundwork of making this essential demand on the picket, in the media. And you know, while we didn't get NYPD off campus in the way that we wanted, I think this moves a lot of campus organizing forward. And I think also points to the fact that in general, people are interested in, and kind of gaining a wider understanding of, of what, what it means for something to be like a worker's issue or a labor issue. And prior to this, I don't think we had a lot of examples of this in, in grad union organizing specifically. And then I also wanted to note, yeah, again, like a kind of internal organizing challenge, which is that while some students face the threat of policing, there is a difference in how students experiencing policing on campus. One of the ways that I hear this being talked about is, is two-tier policing, where primarily white students get sent to the dean and students of colors are the ones who interface with police most often. And so I think this poses really different challenges than organizing around something like wages, which conceivably affects students in a, in a universal way, even though we know that that's also not true. Because wages have different value to people who are in different sort of living conditions. And so this, you know, this can be really difficult within a union organizing setting. And that's why I think it's important to one, center the voices of people who are directly impacted. So a lot of people didn't know that we had at NYU, a large student body of formerly incarcerated people or that we had graduate students who were on parole or on probation and who, you know, faced these kinds of challenges. So I think that that was really important and kind of winning over members of our unit to do something like make a risk of going on strike that was ambiguously legal. And also, you know, standing up to, to UAW, which was, you know, encouraging people to drop these demands, pulling a lot of kind of sneaky moves, not giving us access to their lawyers and legal resources, things like that. And then the other thing that I think is that a lot of people within unions feel very like isolated because these are kind of new issues that are coming up, that people, you know, are, are kind of pushing their unions to consider. And that's why I think groups like COPS of Campus, this type of meeting here are really important because I think a lot of the kind of solidarity that people need to find won't come necessarily from their union because there can be a lot of opposition, but they'll find it, you know, if you go broader scale and you kind of seek support from, you know, other groups doing this nationally, people who have, you know, contract language that you can borrow and other kind of coalitional support. Because I, I do, I do think that this, while this was like exciting, it was also kind of, it was like a big lesson in. Yeah, I think like the risks, I think people who you think are otherwise, you know, progressive, like pro-union people, the kind of limits of that and where those limits and fears come from. And yeah, I think the only solution to that really is like more and more solidarity and wider kind of pools of solidarity. Yeah, I think that's, that's basically what I wanted to mention. But it's really interesting to sort of hear how many of our experiences resemble a lot of the experiences that all of the other panelists have spoken to as well.
Yeah, thanks Chloe. Yeah, definitely noting the common threads. And yeah, I'm just like sitting with what you're saying about the organizing needing to happen sort of externally to the union, but also internally. And yeah, just the like much bigger project that becomes. So thank you for sharing that. Okay, so let's jump into Q and A time. Folks have questions, please begin to drop them in the chat. I'll throw out an opening question if each of you can answer for one to two minutes each while we gather other questions. And so the first question I want to ask y'all is what do you think the field of public health has to offer in support of and in solidarity with abolitionist campus organizing? If you want to maybe go in the order that you spoke.
Yeah, that's a super important question and it was really awesome to hear everybody. I mean, I feel like I have to, and I wish we could talk a lot more about some of these, because there's a lot of technicalities and details about all this, right? That maybe it's better not to talk while it's being recorded. Okay. So I just took like 20 seconds of my time to say that, but um, yeah, I think the, you know, at least for us in Michigan, and it seems like it was a case also with the NYU comrades as well, like framing policing, policing as a public health issue gives you a lot of leverage, right? Or could potentially give you a lot of leverage by precisely what Clay was saying, right? You can kind of, kind of stretch, stretch what is a subject of bargaining, stretch what is permissible to fight over as a union, stretch what is permissible to fight for as, as, as workers within, you know, the dictates of the NLRB, right? State is, is possible. So and for that you need like documents, right? You need things like the American Public Health Association 2018 report that says that policing is a public health issue. You need comrades like Bill who's here, sorry to put you in the spot, Bill, Bill Lopez, who, who does this kind of research and makes the kinds of cases and arguments that, for example, in our case, somebody in HR might find legible, right? And say, oh, look, researchers at this university, you know, demonstrate that public policing is a public health issue, right? So those arguments all help. Of course, it's not only about the kinds of arguments we make when we're sitting in front of HR. I think, as I think Chloe mentioned and other panelists mentioned, you have to build the kinds of alliances, the kinds of anomalous alliances across, you know, you know, the kind of intermural spaces that we're in across campus and outside of campus as well. As I think Brit was mentioning that as well, like we need to come out of campus and even question what, what campus means. And so certainly it's not all about the arguments, but I think the, the kind of public health kind of research has been really helpful in, in framing arguments and helping membership, some members move towards abolition.
I think that there in terms of like research questions for public health as a, as a field to look into around sexual harm. One is that there have been some like transformative or restorative justice approaches to sexual harm cropping up around the country and also people that have been doing this kind of work for a long time. And I think that if that were to be reflected more in public health literature, that could help build more of a foundation for, for growth in, in those kinds of approaches. I think also that like there in sexual violence advocacy has been kind of a taboo around trying to understand why sexual harm is happening or like trying to like, yeah, understand the motivators or, or political, personal, structural contexts for sexual violence happening. And, and I think that like from a public health perspective, having more research around what is it, what are, what are those factors that are leading people to, to act in these ways? Would also be, yeah, could also, could also be really eye-opening. And again, just from like personal, yeah, personal experience, I think it's been really helpful for me to think of like trying to understand why people are acting in the way that they're acting as a way of changing that behavior. And I think there's not a whole lot of like empirical research around. Yeah, around that. So that from a public health perspective, I think that would be.
Yeah, um, I've been having a lot of like internal mind conversations and thinking about this question. To start off, I think abolition and is like fundamentally a public health issue. I don't think it's something that like the Harvard prison divestment campaign like talks about or uses as a strategy much. But obviously as we've seen from the other panelists, like that's, it's really powerful to do so. And I keep coming back to this, and to this like idea that, you know, like the way racial capitalism is structured and the way like police forces and prisons are structured is by like, is exposing people like to death and to premature death in communities. And I think, I think if, I mean, if you look at police, police killings, police murders, but also if you look like within the carceral system at like, at health outcomes, the results are, are like, the facts are like so terrible and so saddening. But I also think whenever I'm thinking about like the public health conversation is never like specifically from like a divestment and abolitionist framework, is thinking about how, how to call attention to the, this public health crisis without relying on arguments that would justify it further, putting more money into the prison industrial complex. Because I think people look at this and they argue for, okay, well, we need better facilities, right? But these better facilities oftentimes like never, never lead to better facilities. It just leads to more money within the system. So I think that's kind of where my mind has been drifting ever since I heard this question. And I'll, I'll go to Joel. And I'll, I'll go to Joel.
Yeah, I agree. I think there's a degree of care that probably needs to be done with the research, but at the same time, in mass incarceration strikes me as, I mean, not necessarily first and foremost, but most certainly a massive public health issue, both as it relates to, I mean, physical health outcomes, but particularly mental health outcomes. I mean, I think there's so much to be said about how being locked up. I mean, beyond the part where it tears you away from your family and robs you of years of your life with them, but also physically robs you of years of your life and tears apart your mental state. So I mean, that, that's one end. I also think, I mean, Britt is right in saying that at least in our work, we don't focus on public health, probably primarily because we're all undergraduates, or at least right now, we're all undergraduates. And to that I would say two things. The first is that I think that even outside of one's field of expertise, like you can be useful to, to projects. So even if, I think, I, I think this is an important question, but I also at the same time, I think, thinking about participation in abolitionism and abolitionist organizations solely in the terms of what you can, what you're specialized in already, isn't especially helpful. Because I think there, there's a need for a lot of different things. I think organizers are should be equipped to fill many different roles. And I also think that, yeah, well, let's say like that. Also, I'm sorry, my cat is, has a zoomies. But yeah, I think that I'll, I'll leave it like that and I'll pass it to, to Chloe.
Thanks. Yeah, I echo what everyone's saying. And as you all were talking, I was reminded that the one actual contract that NYU had with the NYPD was for patrolling its hospitals. So I think make of that what you will, but I, I just thought that that was, yeah, an interesting, an interesting thing that we learned. And yeah, I, I think I echo the need to substantiate with kind of empirical research and evaluations, the effects of police systems on individuals. I think this can be so important for, for movement work. But I also think, you know, more broadly, like expanding these discussions about what is health? Is it a thing that affects individual bodies or is it a collective experience? You know, one thing that we were kind of trying to think about is what are the health effects of like surveillance of communities over time on mental and I'm sure physical health and, you know, like even taking it further, like what are the kinds of like conditions of freedom that are needed in order to be healthy? And I think, yeah, there's like so many different directions that this can be taken, but I think there's so much kind of really relevant backlash against political speech on campuses right now in a much different way than the media is saying, of course. But I think that there are, there's like a need for, for people to look into things like what are, for instance, the psychological effects of seeing a, a blue lives matter flag or an Israeli flag, for instance, for people who have had certain life experiences and why might that produce a certain kind of dissent that is, that is under threat and that people are getting student conduct violations for and are getting in trouble in their workplaces for and things like that. And I think a lot of those kind of like areas of, of research or inquiry, I think, come from, you know, not, not, they, they kind of like follow the threats that, that students and workers are under. And those students and workers kind of like seek out like, I need this kind of like, you know, defense mechanism or whatever against this, this like issue or this way that I'm, I'm trying to be punished. So I think, yeah, I think it's really important for, for people who are interested in public health to, you know, become more and more embedded in, in movements. And I know that a lot of people that I've worked with have, you know, wondered where that, wondered who to turn to for sort of allies in, in the, the health system. So I think it's definitely really important work.
Awesome. Thanks y'all. More questions are coming in. Just to quickly answer your question Gloria, we do have a Slack. I'll drop the link in the chat if folks want to join it. So one question that came in is from someone who's working as a staff member at a university. And they're wondering, how best can staff support student organizing efforts? Throw that to whoever wants to answer.
Could I say something real quick about this? We, we had a situation here at the University of Michigan where something happened with an instructor and I can't be too explicit about what happened, but something happened with an instructor and it seemed like the department was under some, one department was under kind of legal pressure to do things like, you know, train their members in terms of de-escalation techniques. And the staff member at this department, you know, their first thought was we're going to reach out to the Department of Public Safety and Security and ask them to train our, train instructors on how to do de-escalation trainings, right? And so obviously, you know, it's, it's, it's this kind of hammer nail thinking process, right? And the kind of punitive and policing sort of solutions or quote unquote solutions that we have obviously do not resolve our, resolve our needs, right? So maybe one way in which staff and staff, staff meaning broadly, you know, you know, whatever, whatever that means for this particular person could try to push for alternatives to doing things like de-escalation trainings, for example, that pay other forms of organizations that are not, for instance, house within the police. I think to echo kind of, I think one of Chloe's points prior to this about the sort of police university hospital connection here at the University of Michigan, we've been able to kind of scrape some data from the police, the university campus police. And, you know, the main activity that cops here do is at hospitals, right? And oftentimes that includes hospital staff calling the police on people, right? As, as I'm sure you all know, this is a big component of how campus police work when there's university hospitals, right? So I think something as simple as like having a poster that says alternatives to calling the police on your door to finding alternative ways of doing de-escalation trainings for your staff and for other people, maybe like some things that people can do, I think immediately.
Thanks, Alia. Does anybody else want to jump in on that one?
I can speak on behalf of that. I actually work at a community college and I'm a faculty. And I feel that staff or faculty can collaborate with students when they're working on coalition activities in terms of bringing awareness of what are their needs on campus. In sometimes clubs, student clubs, that's, that's a way within community college, a student club has to be sponsored from one faculty. So I know that, you know, universities run differently and there's, there's usually a student union that it's representative, but students do also create their own clubs and that's a way, you know, to, students can, you know, recruit faculty who are interested. Another thing that I know that our community college is doing is they're creating certificates for our faculty and administrators to get involved in learning about equity and inequalities, you know, within healthcare to help, you know, come together and discuss policies that, you know, we can help collaborate and move forward in supporting our campus and our students at the same time. And the American Heart, the, what's it called? American Public Health Association, you know, recently had launched their toolkit, you know, that emphasizes on, what is it called? Their J, which is justice, justice, equity, diversity and inclusion, addressing the whole social determinants of health. I feel that bringing faculty and administrators aware of how the social determinants of health affect individuals, especially who live in marginalized communities and are pursuing higher education is important. And, you know, that was, you know, kind of like the feedback that I can give on my behalf. Thank you guys for hearing.
Thanks for sharing that. Sophie, let's jump to this question from Mark enough for you about Denmark. And if you saw any abolitionist elements in Denmark's culture and what that was like in contrast to the US?
Yeah, this is such an interesting question. I think unfortunately, there can be this expectation of Denmark being the perfect place. And I think there's a lot of things that are very different and and better, especially in terms of the welfare state and just like that there is more like a human centered approach in a lot of ways, more funding for education, healthcare and, and things of that nature. But I think that similar to the US, especially when it comes to immigration, there's a really racialized idea of who deserves to be seen as a human and like that if you are a white ethnic Dane, that you are deserving of those things, those benefits from, from the state, that, that welfare state. And if you're not, that Denmark will have a very like preemptively punitive approach to you. And Denmark has been sued in International Human Rights Court for a lot of their immigration policies, including having like a mandatory three-year waiting period for family reunification and confiscating jewelry and valuables from refugees and just like, yeah, they have a very anti-immigrant policy. And I think, yeah, that has been less of an issue in the most recent elections there, but it has been serving as a model for some other far-right governments in Europe, most recently Sweden. So I think, yeah, unfortunately, while there are some of these more progressive elements, it's also really limited in terms of who is seen as being deserving of those things.
Thanks Sophie. One question we might have from, for two more questions. So folks keep dropping in the chat. One that we've talked a lot about before in this group, but I think this is the right group to ask it to is like movement sustainability on campuses. So including like institutional knowledge transfer from students to students with, you know, organizers graduating. How you all have seen institutional knowledge passed on, how, how you have tried to pass it on. Challenges, things like that.
I can kind of give like a non-answer, which is that it's very challenging. And I think, yeah, it's like this interesting thing because I think student, grad student turnover on the one hand, in some instances like can embolden grad students to kind of take on more risks than if they were, you know, in what was conceivably like their permanent job or something. Of course, that's not like true across the board, but but yeah, I think like the kind of history of student activism in, in the US kind of like lends itself to, to that as like a kind of sub-conclusion of other things. But at the same time, obviously, like I think institutions know that they like through mechanisms like delay that they kind of delay is in favor of the institution because students have a lot of like turnover, you know, even on, on a year-to-year basis, like the group of organizers is, can be vastly different. And I think, you know, the role of faculty and staff can be important there. I also think like building a kind of archive of a lot of the work that is going on is like important and someone should do it. I'm certainly not doing it, but like, I think, you know, that, that's something that, you know, cops off campus organizers are like sort of trying to do. But I think, you know, we have people who like join the labor group that I'm part of for cops of campus and they're like, do you have any examples of contract language around this point? And we're kind of like, well, like it's probably somewhere. So I do think just like building, I don't know, knowledge passes down in, in various ways that I think are, are hard to point to. And you hear stories about past organizers and you, you speak to people, but I think a lot of the kind of like written and strategic documents that can be useful are not. And so I think, yeah, people putting an effort into even writing about their experiences, I think can be, can be really helpful to actually have something tangible to pass along to other people.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I, I want to echo first kind of the non-answer of that. It's really, really hard. It's incredibly hard. Similarly, we have grad students that are here for two years. We have undergrads that are here for four years. Are the, the, one of our, the co-founders of HPDC graduated last year. I think the archival work is important, but also like, for example, we have a drive with all of our, our documents in it. But once you have that, it becomes like a web of, like, like of things that you can't understand. So I think like one thing that we tried really hard to do this year was creating like a system to that where we know where everything is going next. But I think another thing is that like being in contact with people past the time that they graduate can really help. For example, just proof that institutional memory is hard. I, we got locked out of our, our Zoom account last week because one of the people who had graduated was the phone number on the Zoom account. And we didn't have the, like, the password that we needed basically. But because like the, these relationships are more than just organizing relationships, we can, we can reach out and say, hey, like, we're struggling with this. Can, can you give me this information? Or can we come up with a solution? And also like, there are so many people that have like so much, so much knowledge that they, it's not like they disappear off the face of the earth whenever they graduate, you know?
I think I have, I, I agree it is really difficult and it's a problem that we're actually dealing with right now. I would say probably I would have two suggestions, which the first of which would be to constantly be recruiting. And I think especially recruiting people who are on campus for a longer time, although I think anyone definitely, even people who are on campus only for a few years has a place in the movement. But second, I would say is also to make sure that organizing work and just like organization activities more generally aren't a chore, ensuring that the the group feels like a community that this is like a place where you can be yourself. I think that's pretty critical to ensuring that there's less turnover year to year with, with people rather, not as they graduate, but as they, you know, have take on other responsibilities. Yeah.
Can I say something real quick about this as well? Just to add to what's been said, partly in just and partly truly is that, you know, like don't leave where you're at. And there's a, there's a, there's a big, I'm basically, I've, I've done that by keep doing degrees at the University of Michigan, seven year for like 10 years. And not, that's not something I recommend. They probably should have, you know, done therapy instead of keep doing PhDs. But the, the point, the point is that we have, I think in the academy in particular, there's like a way in which we're really pressured to leave where we're at. And, you know, even as an undergrad, I, I had so many friends and comrades that actually fought really hard to stay where they, they were at. And, you know, you know, in, in ways that, that maybe we're not so conducive to the kind of professional life that the academy wants to sell to us, right? So it's difficult to do that, but that's one way to do it. And another thing I'd like to add is that sometimes archives and archiving things can get in the wrong hands as well. And so we have to think about the ways in which we do it that is encrypted or secure in some, in some ways. And that's been an issue in part a lot for people that work with prisoners, obviously, right? Yeah, that's a separate issue. Um, you know, what you do with letters, you scan letters, where do you put them, right? So institutional knowledge is good, but the archive can also be, you know, potentially in some cases, weapon used against you, right? So you have to find ways of of making that you know, not not easy, not easy excessive lot by by the enemy, so to speak.
Yeah, thanks for that. I think like security culture is such a huge and important thing for organizing on campus, off campus, everywhere. And yeah, I'm glad you brought that into this.
Can I just jump in with one quick thing? I think um, to that, like, having a culture of mentorship or like identifying people that you want to develop their leadership and having those people in turn have an eye towards developing new leaders is also important. I think, yeah, that was one of the things that I tried to do in the last like year or two that I was at the university. And um, yeah, I think I would just recommend that people try and do leadership development as well.
Thank you. Yeah. Um, okay, so two questions came in in the chat. I'm gonna ask uh, this first one, how have you all dealt with conflict in the movement? So either internally in your own groups or with other groups on campus who might be aligned or not aligned. So I'm gonna throw that out to all of you. If anyone has an answer to Jeremy's question, I want to throw that in the chat. We probably won't have time to answer that out loud. Go for that too. But conflict.
Uh, I can speak to the conflict thing real quick. Like from the position of like, we dealt with conflict really badly, kind of um, around like ruptures within the union around people who wanted to like push cops off campus forward as an issue and people who did it. And I think um, one of the things I learned from that is to not assume that you are in agreement with people on all issues, if you're in agreement with them on some issues. And I think like people who had worked together for a really long time in um, a union setting who, you know, agreed a lot about like a lot of a labor issues. I think like yes, assuming that 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 we all sort of like were aligned politically on every point, I think kind of worked in our disfavor in terms of building solidarity. And I think like even with trusted allies, like to continue to have these sorts of discussions um, and to kind of proceed at the pace of um, of trust always, you know, I think that that is is really important. And um, you know, also just because people have different like knowledge of different sort of like areas of social justice and stuff. And there's a lot of um, you know, pressure from from different areas of people's lives. And there are reasons why people might yeah, agree with sort of some issues like on paper or something, but not agree strategically. And and these kinds of things can get in the way, I think, if if you're not sort of always like consciously rebuilding the relationships that you already have, I think. And um, yeah, and it's, I think it's always best to do that like earlier rather than later.
I think uh, yeah, in terms of uh, figuring out conflict earlier rather than later. I think in a lot of the movement spaces that I've been in, there's been kind of a conflict avoidance or like a culture of conflict avoidance and just hoping that everyone will be aligned and nothing will come up. And I think, yeah, in retrospect, having an expectation that conflict will occur and that actually conflict can be generative and like conflict can move us towards something better. And uh, trying to create a container that allows for that kind of conflict. Um, and I feel like, yeah, that's something that I'm currently trying to work towards both in movement spaces and personal spaces. And um, yeah, I can drop some resources in the chat in terms of like ways of thinking about that. But um, yeah, I think having the like structure for the out, from the outset, or at least the expectation from the outset that like, oh, we actually can have disagreements. And uh, that that actually could be good for our movement is a good place to start from.
Brit, Joelle, Aleho, any last thoughts on that one?
Yeah, I can talk a bit. I think, I think um, two things. I, so uh, HPDC is a non-hierarchical organization. So everything, like, we don't have like, like a a leader or anything like that. And I I think almost all of um, our actions we do like by coming to consensus um, and talking through like whether everyone, um, like someone comes up with an action idea, we talk about how people feel about it, how or like what people's people's thoughts are. I think it's really good um, in that, like, it teaches you how to compromise. And then also like, um, makes you more reflective on your work, so you don't rush into something and then cause harm. I think at the same time, it is a slower process, right? And it's harder. And then I think the other thing is, at the, at the same point, at the same time, like, we are fundamentally an abolitionist organization. So always standing with those those boundaries uh, um, and those values and whenever we're working with within like within coalition work, um, et cetera. If, yeah, yeah.
I guess I just had that, um, it's, 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 it's definitely a different way to navigate conflict when you have sort of affinity groups and affinities of the kind that maybe Brit was mentioning. I think Chloe also mentioned that you got to move at the speed of trust. But in in a lot of mass organizations, like, you know, uh, a place like the Union where there's lots of people that you don't necessarily trust, they don't necessarily know. It becomes really difficult, right? So this is a very important question to to deal with. And especially, I I think in a kind of political culture in which disagreement is frowned upon or conflicts frowned upon or disagreement is confused for conflict, uh, for example. It is particularly important to maybe distinguish between like principal disagreements um, and in conflict on the one hand. And and that's very difficult to do, uh, because you know, politics are tangled up with 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 people's existence in all sorts of ways. And so it's difficult to disentangle them sometimes as hard as it as it might be that we can disagree on certain things. But not not everything, right? Not everything is up for discussion. Not everything can be disagreed upon. And so it's difficult to be able to sort of make those distinctions and try to nonetheless, still distinguish conflict from disagreements, principle disagreement, right? So maybe that's, that's what I'll say is like being able to kind of isolate. Is this, is this happening because of something else that's happening? That's maybe interpersonal, right? And again, you know, people might say, well, uh, but everything is political in some respects. Yes, but uh, we have to be able to distinguish between different positions and maybe votes in some sense, right? Between uh, uh, different uh, avenues, right? For 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 an organization that is not, uh, is not going to get to mass consensus, right? When you have 1,000 people, right? At least not within the kind of framework uh, or time, time, timeframe that that we want to, right? So I just want to throw that example out there because it's a little different from the kind of affinity group type model that um, maybe some of us are more used to.
Yeah, is there time for me to add one small point to that? Yeah, I I think all of your answers like made me sort of think about this more. And I also just wanted to add that like yeah, like remaining on the right side of of history and like, or like by that, I mean, kind of like sticking to your principles and not kind of confusing the resolution of conflict with compromise, you know, and like is, for instance, is is a conflict with like the UAW, something that we want to resolve or like, you know, come to like a solution or or like mediate? Or is that conflict something that we want to like win, you know, is that like a struggle that we want to be like the winners of? And um, yeah, I think like in organizing culture and like in union organizing culture specifically, those things can get like politeness can get um, kind of like mixed in in a way that is, that sometimes need to be to be pushed back against for sure.
Yeah, thank you. That's an important point. Yes, there's stuff ongoing at APHA this week, actually, that is around that. Um, cool. I appreciate you all for being here and for sharing all of this. Thank you. I, once we finish this, we'll shut off the recording. If anyone wants to stick around and talk about things not being recorded, um, please feel free to do that. Amber, can you stick up the last couple slides? Thank you. Um, so first want to say that we are, uh, we have launched the application for the spring 2023 cohort of the network. This one is going to be, this cohort will be focused on on organizing on their campuses, so organizing abolitionist campaigns on your campuses. Again, asking folks to apply in groups or in pairs, um, so that you have folks that you're organizing with. And each school, we're giving a small stipend to um, to help cover some campaign costs. So um, if you're interested in applying for this, this is the link. Um, I'll drop that in the chat also. Please do, please apply with the application I just put in the chat. Also, all of our speakers, feel free to apply for it also. And then the last thing, next slide, thank you, is that our final political ed session for this iteration of the of the network will be Wednesday, December 7th. So we're going to be skipping the um, November 23rd and going to December 7th. So I'll send out some reminders about that, but just so you know, that's in the next one is, please join. And yeah, thank you again to speakers. Thank you so much for being here. Thanks for all the organizing that you're doing um, and that you have done on your campuses. It's just, yeah, it's incredibly needed and grateful to know that folks are out there doing it. And if we can be a resource at all for you, please um, reach out to. Cool. Thank you also to our captioners. Thank you to folks for showing up. That's it. Have a good rest of your day. I'm gonna shut off the recording. If folks want to stick around, please do.